January 24th, 2019 at 6:00 PM.
Councilman Coles. Councilman Dean.
Here.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilman McTominay.
Here.
Mayor Sherrill.
Country of Legends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of Jan- of December 27th, 2018 for the Menneson City Council meeting.
Second.
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 10th, 2019 for the Menneson Work Session.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman McTominay.
Yes.
Councilman McTominay.
Yes.
And I have a motion, asking a motion to approve minutes of January 18th, 2019, a Menneson Special Meeting.
Thank you.
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
We'll now open up the floor to public comments on agenda items only. If you'd like to have to say something, please come up to the speaker podium. It's just on agenda.
Oh, just jacket on.
I didn't know if Nancy was working away, she was just going back.
No, I was just looking for.
Ken?
They're out there at the door when you come in.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to have a presentation from Pastor Tim Bergen of the Christian Center. Pastor?
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, thank you so much for your time. I see the agenda is quite long, so I'm gonna try to be very, very brief. It's tough for a miss. The Christian Center Church has developed a series of programs that are functioning very well. It's helped the people in our community. We're located in Ross Draper Township. And in that area, we gather people from Menneson, from Choleroo, from Ross Draper, from Fayette, from all over the area. Working with kids with our tutoring program, reading program. We do a single moms outreach, celebrate recovery, we should say, drug and alcohol rehab type program. Recovery program, and several other programs like that. And through the development of those programs, we've seen that there's a need for us to orientate those programs to help our community. Now, everything that we do is free. We don't charge anything for anyone. And a lot of people in the community are helped. And so, we had the idea of how can we do this in the communities, furthering on in the communities, to touch them and to help them without going through the process of planning a church and becoming competition for other churches in the area. It didn't seem to make sense for me, especially in the city of Menneson, when you have so many good churches here to come in and put one more church in. You've got a bunch of great churches. So, what our plan is, after looking at some of the areas here, we've decided that we're going to be investing in developing one of your buildings in the city to place a coffee shop. Not just a coffee house kind of thing like a lot of churches do, but a regular coffee shop. Along the lines of the quality of a Starbucks or a crazy mocha or one of those type of things in the community. Where kids can also come and receive a tutoring program, a reading program, celebrate recovery for the adults, single moms program, do a GED program, and other things like that, in a place that is, we have three purposes of what we're trying to do. Number one, to put a quality business in the community that the community can look at and say, you know what? Here's another quality business. It looks good, it feels good, it helps the community to look better and feel better. Secondly, for me, of course, as a pastor, is that the name of Jesus would be lifted up, that the community would be encouraged, that children would get the help that they need. Our reading program, we take kids for two weeks, and we can increase their reading level by a whole grade level, just two week period of time. We can also help the community with dealing with any drug and alcohol type issues, and just be there for the community in different ways. And that's part of what our plan is. And then, the third thing that we want to do is coming into the community is to help the local churches as well. That they will work with us on these programs, hopefully, I haven't approached many of the churches in the area, but they will work with us on these programs, so that we can build up their churches and get people, bottom line, bring hope to aspects of the community that don't have hope yet. And this is our way of doing it, without being a burden on the community. We're not asking for the community to do anything. We're gonna invest in this ourselves, we're gonna make this happen ourselves. And we're hoping to work with the other churches in the community to bring something that will help bring a peace to certain areas of the community, and to lift up the community in the best way possible. Along with that, our hope is, and should I bring this up or not about the parking, or no, just leave that for another time?
I'll leave that for another time.
Okay, then, let sleeping dogs lie. So, anyhow, so that's kind of what we're hoping to do. And we hope that many in the community, in the business community or in the area, will see it as a thing where it's a positive, where it's actually adding to the community, and where the people can look and say, you know what? There's a business that is saying to everyone outside of Menneson, hey, there are more things happening in Menneson than what we think. And we aren't, please, don't get me wrong, we aren't the answer, I'm not saying we're the answer to everything that's going on in Menneson. I'm just saying, we want to do our part. As a church, we feel responsible to try to do something to help our neighbors, to help our community in the best way we can. And this is the way that we're proceeding. Thank you for your time, and if you have questions, we're here.
Jerry, Treasures Report, please.
Members of Menneson City Councils, ladies and gentlemen. The report for December 2018. Garbage fees revenues. Garbage fees current for December, $7,475. Year-to-date, we collected $343,971.49. The budgeted amount was $340,000, so we're almost $4,000 over the budgeted amount. Garbage fees delinquents. For December, $5,843.04. Year-to-date, $61,899.99. 2018 budgeted, $105,000. So, we're under budget on that account. Garbage housing authority, they report quarter-to-date, year-to-date, $61,425. 2018 budgeted, $62,595. For a total income of $507,595. Garbage fees collected for 2019. December, $48,039.50. December, year-to-date, $128,231.25. 2018 budgeted, $120,000. City real estate taxes revenues. City's real estate taxes current for December, $36,139.93. Year-to-date for 2018, $1,850,217.61. 2018 budgeted, the general fund received, will receive, $1,282,000. Depth service fund will receive, $479,000. Parks fund received, $188,000. Library fund received, $50,000. For the total of $1,999,000. Delinquent city taxes. City taxes prior year collected by the city. December, nothing, year-to-date, $4,381.46. And the budgeted amount for 2018 was $1,000. City taxes collected by Westmoreland County Tax Claim Bureau quarterly, December was $30,648. Year-to-date, $196,029.29. 2018 budgeted amount was $100,000. Total year-to-date taxes, $2,050,628.36. Distribution of the funds as follows. For the general fund, received $1,315,110.34. Depth service fund received, $491,371.19. Parks received, $192,855.48. And library fund received, $51,291.35. For a total of $2,050,628.36. That concludes my report for the month of December. I need a motion, office?
Have a motion to accept the Treasures Report as presented.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
Police report for the month ending December 2018. Parking meter receipts, $1,094.66. Parking fines and forfeits was $935. Parking permits was $1,725. Miscellaneous collections was $580. Court receipts from district justice offices was $2,471.82. Total receipts for the month of December 2018 was $6,806.84. There were a total of... Total calls for 2018 ended up being $12,120, if anyone's interested. And the arrests for the month of December were $1,551. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Ford Business Machines, Inc. for the lease of the copier for the month of December 2018. To be paid out of CDBG funds in the amount of $75.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 4-2019. A resolution to change the authorized signatory on farmers' bank accounts and related checks for the city of Menneson, county of Westmoreland, Pennsylvania.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 5-2019. A resolution of the city council of the city of Menneson approving and authorizing the designation of signing authority for invoices for the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 2016. Thank you. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 6-2019. A resolution of the city council of the city of Menneson approving and authorizing the designation of signing authority for invoices for the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year 2017.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve the form of a liability insurance policy of the Menneson Parks and Restoration Group, subject to the city's reviewing of its certificate of insurance, with the city name as an additional insured prior to performance of any work on city property.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
A motion to approve a request from Nikki Williams to host a community event, "Help Kids Beat Cancer", at the City Park walking track on September 14th, 2019, to benefit the Penn State Dance Marathon.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
A motion to approve a request from Jamie Hurst to use the Menneson City Park softball field and concession stand on April 27th, 2019, and April 28th, 2019, for a Menneson Youth Softball League Tournament.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
I have the library board report for the month ending December 2018, if you'd like to see it. And also have the financial report for the month ending December 2018, if you'd like to see it. I have a motion to approve payment to WEC, Inc. in the amount of $2,865 for construction management and observation and periodic estimate review for the 2018 downtown Menneson demolition and site clearance project, to be paid out of the bond refinancing funds.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve payment to WEC, Inc. in the amount of $500 for construction management for the 279 Scootumaker Avenue demolition and site clearance project, to be paid out of the general fund.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve payment to Morneak Excavation, Inc. in the amount of $10,305 for invoice number one, partial, for the Third Street drainage repair project, for the recommendation of WEC, Inc. to be paid out of the line usage funds.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay?
Yes. There's a street report for the month of December 2018, and also Parks report for December 2018. If you'd like to see one, they'll be available to you. But as you know, we've had several snowstorms, and between our parks and our street crews, it kept our roads almost completely clear, no ice and no snow. So, I think they just deserve a lot, a hand for that, because it's hard work, but they were out there around the clock keeping those roads. I remember that first time we had that storm, you would think that there would have been major issues, but every road was clear, and you wouldn't even know we had a storm. So, they are doing an excellent job, and it's around the clock, it's not easy, but they're doing an excellent job. So, I think we ought to, whenever you see them, the parks on the street, because they work together, just tell them to do an excellent job, and we appreciate everything that they do. We now have a motion to approve a handicap space and sign for Robert Youngblood, 1415 Walden Avenue, as according to approval of the police and code enforcement departments.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman McTominay.
You're welcome.
Councilman Dean?
Thank you, everybody. Kind of packed tonight, it's kind of weird compared to the last couple ones. I have the December 2018 Code Office report. Habituation permits, 13, correction letters, 11, animal complaints, 18, miscellaneous complaints, 15. Certified letters for the late garbage, we sent out 17 of those, and had four hearings, and one demo permit. 2018 December Code Enforcement Office financials, we brought in, just for the month of December, $6,487.36. For the total, 2018, year-to-date, we brought in $240,870.44. From the fire report for the month of December. Menneson Fire Department companies number one and two devoted a total of 397 man-hours to the city. Also, side note, I know it's not, it wasn't in January, but you got the number one and number two helping with the fire on 136 and over in DeNora, especially the other day in DeNora, when it was very cold outside. I appreciate your guys' hard work.
You're welcome.
Emergency medical services report is, emergency calls in the month of December was 120. Fire standby calls was eight, and public service calls were four, for a total of 132 incidents. Civic Center Rec Board report. They discussed upcoming youth basketball season and schedules. Scoreboard and wall padding has been delivered. And a reorg of the board is on hold till a new member is seated. And that's all I have for my stuff.
Thank you. Mr.?
I started looking into the assessments for commercial properties throughout town. I have information that I need to discuss with council to see what, if any, properties we will be filing an assessment appeal on. And delinquent garbage collection, that process is still ongoing, letters are being sent out to those who are delinquent on their accounts. That's my report.
Thank you. Wayne?
The following is the Bank Reconciliation Community Bank checking account. The prior balance at November 30th, 2018, was $283,070.33. Deposits totaled $312,166.28. Disbursements, $348,097.92. For a final amount reconciliation of the balance statement, at 12:31 18, $247,138.69. As far as the CDBG fund report, that will be given next month, it'll be a two-month report.
Okay, I have a motion to approve payment on checks already released from the general fund for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $98,255.45.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve electronic transfers from the general fund to the payroll fund for payroll for January 2019 in the amount of $112,521.84.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve electronic transfers from the general fund to the healthcare account for healthcare expenditures for the month of January 2019, in the amount of $88,848.26.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of general fund expenditures for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $122,412.32.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the Parks Fund expenditures for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $1,974.79.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the recreational board expenditures for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $1,314.25.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of line usage fund expenditures for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $18,910.94.
Second.
Second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the grant fund expenditures for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $8,678.62.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
We have a motion to approve payment of the demo fund expenditures for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $21,000.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment of capital improvement expenditures for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $3,505.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman McTominay.
Yes.
Before we hit the public comment, I have something real quick that I want to go over. Something, I believe it was last Saturday, in the paper, there was the response and the thing from DCED to the mayor's comments, and some of his reasons or problems he's having. And this is something I like to call fact-checking with Matt, because Matt needs his checks, his facts checked, that's for sure. Council allegedly delayed the awarding of the pension fund contract. Mayor, we've been through this all many times. This council was not part of the pension transfer. As far as delaying the awarding of the pension transfer, as per the state order general's recommendation, the city met twice with the police pension board representatives. While moving forward to have an independent third-party assess to make an unbiased assessment, to move forward, that individual had to bow out due to unexpected conflict. Scheduling conflicts have held up the meeting again to our next meeting, which is the 29th, is I believe, next month, next Tuesday. And these bullet points aren't mine. These are bullet points that the mayor actually had in the paper. Alleged conflicts of interest with companies being awarded bids and lack of minority companies receiving contracts. The city advertises all contracts that are required to be placed out to bid by law, and then publicly awards bids for the lowest and most responsible bidders, as per the law. These requests for bids are advertised in the paper, and the city never prohibits any company from placing a bid. I'm asking him to please explain in detail how many minority firms, businesses are left out of the process. It's open to everyone. Non-uniform city employees continue to work without a contract and are alleged gender pay gap. The city continues to negotiate towards a solution that benefits both the city bargaining unit and the city taxpayers. So, my question is this, what's his point? I'm not quite understanding. Were negotiations, were we trying to negotiate and finish this? Again, I'm not sure what he's talking about. And as far as the gender pay gap, I don't have a clue whatever he's talking about there. That makes no sense at all, all right? I'd like to know what he's referring to specifically, or maybe all of you would like to know what he's referring to specifically, because I sure have no idea. Again, facts and figures, not vague comments or vague accusations. Full-time police officers not being hired to replace ongoing officers. I believe I explained this in the state of the city response. The city cannot afford to hire anyone full-time under their current contracts. 100% covered lifetime benefits for city employees coupled with zero deductibles is something that the city can no longer afford, let alone, it also covers their families as well as retirees for full in life. Further, council has had a continuous and open dialogue with the police about an issue, and are collectively working towards a resolution and a solution that benefits the city. That's been ongoing. Council ongoing demands for me, I'm sorry, for him to resign, I'm sorry. No confidence, that could happen, I'm not quite sure. No confidence proclamation and ongoing calls for his impeachment.
I'm at a meeting, I'm at a meeting.
My question to Matt is this, have you seen the polls?
Yeah.
772 to resign and 105 to stay. We're not making this up, we didn't make the poll, we didn't put out, okay, the paper put it out. So, do you realize that is over half of what God in his total votes when he won his mayor's seat? There's only a couple more, so I won't take you too long. Council alleges payment for demolition of properties not owned by the city. Again, Matt, do some fact-finding, I'm sorry. You will find out, the city always has paid for properties that were demolished, not the redevelopment authority. They never had any money, unfortunately, to do that. So, what do you think CDBG money is used for? That's what we use part of CDBG money for, is demolitions. And thank God for Senator Stefano giving us the emergency demolition money for the one on Third Avenue, or we wouldn't have that money. And on top of it, when we demolish a building, and even if we pay for it, and even if the redevelopment authority owned it, the city acquires that property after it's been demolished. It's no longer in the redevelopment authority's hands. Am I correct, Luke? Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll let you talk later. Because this could be a while for you. Okay. Revenue from the sale of the real estate totaling $98,000 indicates an alleged existence of a predetermined buyer. Now, this one's a good one. Once again, you are out of touch with everything that's going on in a city. The $98,000 is one of the many following balloon payments from the sale of the old Health Mart complex. But we're secretly going to sell property for $98,000 to someone.
I did it, I did it.
Was it you, Nan?
You mean the health center, right?
I'm sorry?
The health center.
Yeah, the complex, the old city.
He's at Health Mart.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Health Center. Redevelopment authority accused violations. As mayor, if you'd bother going to any of the meetings, you would see that the minutes are properly taken, and dates and times for every meeting were advertised at the same time that the city advertises its council meetings for the whole year. I'm sorry how you missed it, but you might want to check on that. This one, I know some of you are going to laugh, or you won't, but my appointment as acting mayor potentially violating state law and constitution. Well, my question to you is, well, somebody's got to act as mayor, don't they? But he sure as hell isn't. And I thought this job fell under the deputy mayor's responsibilities when the mayor is MIA. According to third-class city code, it does. And since you've missed over 22 meetings and have not participated in any one decision or decisions about a situation involving the city, I would think the citizens would want someone to try to steer the ship. For your information, the three of us are doing that. If you have any questions. Changing the locks codes for entrance to city hall. Once again, you prefer to lie about the issues and continue to make stuff up as you go along. At no time, at no time, were any locks changed at this city hall. Never. As far as your codes are concerned, I explained that in the state of the city, and we're still waiting for you to come down and get your codes. As far as your codes are concerned, I explained that in the city, the state of the city, and we're still waiting for you to come down and get your codes. Municipal building violates third-class city code and other concerns about the individual who purchased it. Again, state your facts, be specific, because I'm not understanding that, maybe some of you are, but I'm not. If the buyer had the money to purchase it, as far as I'm concerned, it's a done deal and it's not a hazard to the city. It's something this city desperately needs. We don't have people like a deli counter taking tickets off here and going, hey, we can't wait to come in here. I'm sorry, we're not going to push anybody away. We need the income. I'm going to save this one for the last. There's a reason for it. Alleged diversion and imitation committed by the former mayor, current solicitor, and current council in failure to remedy my past issues. Again, you need to be specific. If you're going to accuse people of things, you need to stand up and be a man and tell them exactly why you're accusing them, what your facts are, and what you think is wrong.
I'd still like a copy of that letter with him saying that I intimidated him. I need a copy.
What's in the paper?
No, no, I need a copy of what he said, how I intimidated him.
Well, we haven't figured that out either yet. Just so you know, we have never got a letter stating you did this, 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 and this. Nobody's had that, that's my point. And there's the last one that I'll let Councilman Finn choose to comment on. Social media attacks.
What?
So I'm sure all of you have seen my comments on social media.
I can't wait.
Apparently they are taking his harassment. The last time I checked, when I post physical evidence of a blatant lie coming out of the mayor's mouth, that's not harassment, that's me telling the truth. And I will continue to do that whether it offends him or not, or anyone else. If you lie, many people have asked for us to have transparency, correct, Ernie? I am being transparent. I have posted screenshots, messages between the mayor and myself. I will continue to do so, because if you lie, I will call your ass out.
And, thank you. And on top of that, again, I expect all of you, if we're not transparent, Scraper, you damn well tell me.
I will.
I thank you for that. I thank you for your honesty. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, again. But we're being transparent, we're being open. We're not hiding anything. There's nothing here to hide, trust me. If you really dig into what we do every day, you'll run like hell out that door because it's scary. So, again, that was our commitment that this council has made, and we're not changing it. Am I correct?
Yep.
Now, the fun part, public comments on non-agenda items. Please come up to the podium first. State your name and address, please.
John Francis Gahl, fifteen forty-five Melanin Avenue, Manessin. Since we're on this issue of Matthew Sheraw, I don't know if the newspapers can investigate and find out how much he's cost the taxpayers of the city of Manessin and West Wallen County with these false accusations, such the case with John Peck, according to the papers, been closed. But we need to know how much it costs the detectives of West Wallen County to come to your house and investigate this nonsense. Not to mention that, when Lou Maracas was mayor, he wrote up false charges about this building not being capable of becoming city hall. We need to know how much the taxpayers had to pay seven building inspectors from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to answer his false accusations when Lou was mayor. And we are in city hall, the building's fine, but the taxpayers have got to know, maybe the newspapers can call and find out from the state and the county, how much the taxpayers had to pay for these ridiculous, nonsense investigations. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernie, can you come up, please?
Wait, what does that mean?
Somebody's phone is dying.
It's not me.
It's Bernie's phone.
Good evening, everyone. I need to bargain for a call on the fifth John Pennsylvania Boulevard in Manessin. I also have a business here. I welcome any new business in town. We need any business we can get. More restaurants downtown will be fine, anything will be fine. But any problem I have with our parking meters, I know we need the extra money from the parking meters and permits and stuff like that, but I just don't, I hope we just don't put the parking meters in front of my business only and let Flurtry down not have parking meters. That's not fair to me. That little bit of money people have putting in parking meters, they just don't want to put in there and it's hurting my business. So if we're going to put parking meters in, put them all down through town, that's why I say, to be fair.
Well, I think, I believe, we said that the parking was freed during the construction time because of what was going on, and you can't park anywhere, so there should be, there should be no tagging anybody on dawn.
But when we do get the construction done, are we going to put the meters back up in front of my place? Probably so.
We can, we can discuss it.
We can discuss it.
And later they were discussing. My biggest thing is like, you know, I don't want to be doing it because that meter maybe we add, do you want each give me the finger and all that stuff like that? You know, and I accept the finger, I thought that was a nice gesture. Some people wave, some people give you the finger. I like it, you know, I do like that. But like I said, I just don't want the meter to be in front of my place, maybe dealing with my hands now. This is like, no, with all this construction going on, you know, my business included, I've talked to other businesses in town, it's killing our businesses. My business is off by seventy percent. I'm almost ready to really pull the plug on it. I'm sticking in there, and I think new business coming to the business is a really good, great idea, and I like to welcome him, I think it's a great idea, let's go on with it. And if there's any other businesses wanting to put any restaurants up, that's fine. But even when these properties like the cross street, my restaurant, they come up themselves, I'd like to have a chance to buy them, maybe, you know, so I can put a parking lot there or something, you know, whatever. But the parking is my main concern. It just don't penalize me putting meters in front of my place.
Of course not.
I think you're telling. You know, like Mr. Finn, you've done a great job. I love your permits. I want to give you a hug, my son. You want to see something, I save them.
I hope everybody does.
I think you're one of the best things in Manessin, God.
I wouldn't go down for it, but thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, thank you for your time, and I wish you well in your work.
Thank you, thank you, too.
I heard you too.
I welcome your business. I talk to friends of Wall City.
Are we cool today, Eric?
I have a few questions. One, I heard that representatives or lawyers of the Indian that bought the building, the great Best Medical, were they in town?
I'm not in town all day, so I can't answer that.
Did anyone see, did anyone contact you, attorney, telephone?
I thought somebody was in town for it?
Yeah, what happened to them?
Well, it is his business, I imagine, they can handle it as they want.
We were under the impression that they were coming down to play ease about the radioactive waste that they're going to store. And I was eager to meet with them, so I give them a question.
I'm sure there'll be another date they'll be back in town and hopefully at some point very soon in the spring, I'm hoping that they can address council, they can address everybody at the same, same time.
Okay, has anyone on this board received any protocols? How are they going to handle the storage? And what kind of products or items are going to be handled?
I think that's premature at this moment for any of us to make any comments. That was only a first, I'm sorry, solicitor, go ahead. That was only the very first step in many steps to acquire that permit, okay? That wasn't just a stamp, you can do anything, you can store anything and go for it. That was only the very first step in many requirements by state and federal authorities. So it's taken him what, over a year to get that? A little bit more over a year. It could be another six to eight months before the second process is even in place.
Look, I just want to inform you that when anybody goes to rent a building or buy a building, they're supposed to show all their cards and say what they're going to use it for and be as specific as possible because they're going to have an impact on the community. I don't see this. All we're talking about is many, many steps, and he already got everything up front. It's like putting a cart in front of the horses. That's how I see it, and I was kind of disappointed that his alternate owners wasn't around here today. I don't think he's very transparent himself. Okay, another thing, what do you think, attorney, that you're going to have this assessment, tax assessment on these business entities that should be paying more property and school tax?
Council going to have some decision to make on whether or not to file those appeals, because what those appeals come costs.
Can you give me a timeline?
We have to be, the appeal has to be filed by the end of March.
Oh, March.
I mean, because, you know, each one of those commercial appeals is going to carry a bill worth a $5,000 for appraisal.
That much?
That's how much commercial real estate appraisals are.
So much we paid for the building.
You'd be sending that out for beer?
There would be the RFP process likely, yes.
That sounds too much.
That's the cost of doing business for these appeals, so anyone in the council wants to take, to file the appeal, they have to justify that.
That was suggested. Can you like send a letter to these five entities and ask them, do it the easy way or the hard way? The easy way is, how much would you add? Would you add twenty, thirty, forty percent of what you used to pay?
If I sent you a letter asking you to pay more taxes, would you respond?
I would say, see my lawyer. Is that going back to J.D.'s comment, giving a big fuss to the firemen, and then also Thomas's comment about the city parks? Is this going to translate into a good compensation package? So we're just going to give them work. Some of these people do work hard. Like it's not an even plan. So like, I hope when you guys are negotiating, that some of the people that aren't seeing it, that are in the eyes all the time, you know, they get something, you know, for their benefit, so thank you. So that's it, but my main emphasis was tonight to confront these people that were supposed to tell us about the great, the best medical stuff. But if you could get a hold of the protocols of how he's going to handle the safety of what items, I would like to be the first one to have it.
I'll get you a coffee if I can.
I would ask you one thing, though, Ernie.
Yeah, go ahead.
Don't confront, we'd like to meet.
When I mean confront, I'm not going to talk, you know, sissy around them, I'm just going to ask them direct questions, and I want direct answers, that's what I mean by.
But like this, this kind of conversation, this is a good conversation.
I know, we are, we're eating a lot, I like it.
Can I have your address and send you a letter?
Yes.
I've got a short thing to say. I'm offended by him using that term Indian as a racial slur. I totally don't like that.
Listen, you can call me Greek, I'm not going to get better, but that's some bullshit.
Ernie, Ernie.
He's an Indian, he is an Indian.
Ernie.
Don't call him an Indian, though.
But why not? That's his nationality, he's an Indian.
You don't call him an Indian, do you? Call you dirty Greek or something, no. I'm offended.
That's two different things, you can call me Greek.
I'm offended.
I don't like it, I don't like it.
That's bullshit.
You're very racial.
Ernie, listen, if someone feels offended by something, then we shouldn't do it. Well, it might not offend you. Yeah, I agree, but it might offend someone else.
This is why we got the problem with Matthew Sheraw. He was brought up with this bullshit from the millennium age, and everybody got addicted to it.
Things change as we go through life, bro.
The thing is, there's a big difference between racial and ethnicity. I didn't call him a brown guy, okay, or a black guy, but if a black guy's from Ethiopian, I could call him an Ethiopian. He's from India, I could call him an Indian. And people better start defining what is, you know, right and what's wrong. But they lump everything together and now we can't even say nothing to nobody.
Ernie, your three minutes is up. It looks like you're going all the way.
He didn't want to attack.
He didn't attack, he made a public comment. I'd say the same thing if you did to you. Is there anybody else that has any public comment, please? I have a comment, please.
We were like this close.
His phones kept going off, his phones kept going off.
I would like to make a public comment in regards to Matthew Sheraw's comment about me, his first, the first bullet of information in the Saturday's paper. First of all, there were two things. First of all, he accused me of, as city controller, not being able to block the transfer of the police pension fund money from one company to the other. And, correct me if I'm wrong, solicitor, I don't have the right to block that transfer.
No, it's a contract, it's not a payment of money, like, you know, we just paid all the bills.
Number two, he accused my professional alliance with the auditor general, De Pasquale. That I don't get as far as my professional alliance. I work for the auditor general, I'm in the Bureau of Firefighters Relief Association audits, I'm not in the police, I'm not in the pension, municipal pension audits. So I don't know where he's trying to tie me in with that. And, like I said, yes, I do work for the auditor general, I have been for eighteen years, and I'm not even in that bureau. So how that could, how I could tie into that pension fund audit, you got me. But that's what he claims, my professional alliance with the auditor general.
Back to not being a fact finder.
I work for the auditor general, but I'm not in that bureau.
You just work for it.
I just wanted to clarify those two statements that he had made about me. He called me out by my name in the, in the media. But if he has anything to say to me, he can say it to me, say it to me personally, say it to my face. I'll answer any questions. But don't, don't call something out in the paper, in the media, and you don't have all the facts. Yes, I could stop a payment, I could question a payment as city controller to vendors, to any dispersals. But that was a transfer of funds in a contracted situation, a transfer of funds from one company to the other. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a question.
You gotta go up. Yeah, you have to.
Tell Wayne to go up.
Yeah, oh, no, twelve fifty-two, I stay in the street. I just have a question about Christian and Best Medical. Didn't he come here and explain all this before everything went through, like a couple times?
Yeah, I think.
They had meetings and he was like.
He explained things while we were together.
He was going to bring medical radiates.
It's not waste.
Radiating, you didn't know that?
It's not waste, just I did. It's seeds. It's the seeds that they treat people with cancer with. That's what it is. They make little seeds.
You're going to put that in writing?
Actually.
They want it to release, don't see what he got?
On their website, and they told you, there are seeds, and they're what they treat people with cancer with. All the hospitals that treat cancer have those there, too. I'm not worried.
Actually, Ernie, the seeds, my mom worked in micro for thirty years, she's a microbiologist at Washington Hospital, they use it for testing in the micro lab to test certain elements. So she handled it for thirty years, and she doesn't have radiation poisoning.
I'm not saying they're garbage, but the thing is, we got to be more specific because it's going to affect.
No, I agree, and as soon as I get the protocols, I will give you guys.
My whole thing is, it's not waste, it's not radioactive waste, and people are starting rumors, and I think that's wrong because he's doing something good. That's treatment for cancer. Excuse me?
And, yeah.
I'm talking. It's cancer treatment, which a lot of people have these days, nobody's noticed, so it's not a bad thing. Thank you.
And the other thing is, the rumors that are going around are like, we're having a zombie apocalypse and it's starting down there, okay? That is, that is no.
We didn't say you.
We didn't say anybody, but the rumors.
And I don't even go to Castle Blood.
You know what, I'm not even going to comment on that, we'll keep it right there.
My question is, we're very upset about Best Medical, but am I correct in thinking at the end of town that there's also chemicals being stored across from Sunoco and the old Tube Bank building? Um, through the parliament file?
I agree.
I, I think so. I might be wrong, but that was just all approved through the state, and it did come in front of council, it was on a council issue. It was on a council issue, because I remember being surprised when I heard about it. In the same way, when we're going towards, off Grand Boulevard, past the dump, towards Walmart, there's chemicals there as well that had nothing to do with Ross Draver's counsel getting involved in that. It's all state issues. It's not.
The state is holier than doubt. I mean, they make mistakes.
No, but what I'm saying is, we're putting these folks under a microscope that they don't have answers.
Somebody asked them some questions, and they said they're going to get back to it.
But I also had, like, that thought entered my mind, that I think chemicals are creeping into all communities in different ways. That, or, yeah, that we don't really always know.
Well, then either organic and stay away from all that stuff.
Right. I tried to. I tried to. But Best Medical did hand out, when I was at the meeting, I have an entire packet at my building of every, all his investments and everything he did. But I have that in the file cabinet at my office.
Can I have a copy of that?
Yes, I'll get it to you. No problem. And secondly, when we're looking at evaluating businesses and taxes and assessing them and raising taxes, along with the cost of the assessment, I'm concerned with all the construction here in town with the streets. We start raising businesses, taxes. What's to keep them intact?
If I can interject there, that, that's a very valid point. This is a double-edged sword. You know, we can go to court and try to raise these taxes. In some circumstances, if we're wrong on what we think that value of the property is, it can be lower, too. It's not just we're going in there and asking for it to be higher.
I'm grateful. Go after the five businesses that's supposed to be paying a fair share, and you won't have to break the taxes.
We, we are.
They're doing it.
But we have to be grateful for the businesses that Menneson has and the people that are investing in our community. We have to be grateful to them, too, and we have to be fair to them because many of our places could relocate to other areas and do much better. And they, they stay here, and we are grateful, I'm personally grateful, to every business in Menneson that makes it work. So, that's all.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you. Keep me in Menneson here.
That's right. I want you in Menneson.
Keep them alive.
I didn't know what she said.
State your name and address, please.
Hopefully, y'all know who I am. Don Greger, fourteen twenty-eight Graham Avenue. You're welcome. What does the mill pay? What does the coke plant pay for taxes?
Ninety-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, ninety-six hundred dollars.
Ninety-six hundred dollars.
It's, it's a little more over ten thousand because they have the building that's next to the pharmacy.
Okay, nineteen ninety-four, when this deal was put through, what were they paying before that?
Which deal?
That's when they got their taxes loaded.
That was in nineteen ninety-four?
Yeah.
Was that when they were, ceased to be operational in nineteen ninety-four?
I believe it was. They were on, pardon me? Hot Idaho. Thank you.
I, I don't know what it was back then. It was probably substantially more.
Well, it was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, if you were, who made this deal with them? Was it the county?
I was eight years old.
You're no longer eight years old. You are now.
I, I don't know how that deal came about. I don't.
I just find it interesting that the deal was made back then. Then they opened the plant back up, and no one has done anything, well, I'm sorry, someone did try to do something. I think it cost us quite a bit of money when we, when the city of Menneson lost the lawsuit. That was back in two thousand and fifteen when we had that big payout that you were talking about the last time I was here.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a zoning issue, though.
It was.
It wasn't a tax issue.
Yes and no.
No, it was a zoning issue.
Yeah, well, but it had a lot to do with the paying of the taxes and, uh...
No, it was a land use appeal, actually.
Pardon me?
It was a land use appeal.
Land use appeal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I stand corrected. But anyhow, but nineteen ninety-four, they were paying this money, and all of a sudden, they, because they're on Hot Idaho, it goes down to ten thou, or ninety-six hundred dollars. I was told it was ten thousand two hundred dollars.
That's the combination of both courses.
So, my number was correct?
It's ten thousand dollars. Bye.
Okay. Now, I could see you going after them. Ernie was talking about these five other ones, and this is just from my information because I'm just trying to dig into a lot of this, and I don't understand. I've missed too many meetings. I won't be missing that anymore. Who are these other four organizations that he was talking about?
I don't know, but I've pulled property records from New Health Center complex, all the way down the river at Charlotte Menneson Bridge, so I have more than five.
How many are you looking at?
Uh, it's over a dozen.
How many do you feel are feasible to go out?
Hmm, five.
That's your call, Ernie. It's not him.
Five, I think, would be worth taking a substantial look at to make a determination.
So, you're looking at, if you do these, and they're five thousand dollars a piece, you'd be looking at the city spending an extra twenty-five thousand dollars of legal fees.
No, that's just the appraisal.
That's just the appraisal, right. Legal fees on top of that, ballpark figure.
And there's two processes.
I won't hold you to any of it.
There's two processes to this. One, there's the Board of Property Assessment Appeals. It's a hearing in front of a conference room. Typically, those get appealed by either the municipality or the property owner. They go to the Court of Common Peace.
Approximate cost? Yes, a guesstimate.
Thank you. Six to ten thousand, just for those five properties.
Just for those five properties.
I mean, because there's court time involved. So, I mean, it's a business decision, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. You're talking a significant chunk of change, which we really don't have. Sometimes you have to bite the bullet. I listened to Mr. Furtall talking about the streets, and I'm watching as Morgan digs up and puts in the water line from Four Street up to the night, I believe. And I noticed that, in this case, he's patching the top with, it looks like cold patch. I imagine the asphalt plants are shut down for the winter, so he's patching with asphalt. Why wasn't that done with the rest of these streets?
What do you mean?
Well, from Four Street on down, they put that water line in a year ago. Why wasn't that patched?
I, I, that's a PennDOT project. I don't know if it was the water line project or the one where...
It was a water line project.
That's a PennDOT road.
Well, that part up there is a PennDOT road, too, but I see he's putting cold patch in.
That's a Water Authority project, too.
But it's still a PennDOT road, right?
Right. So, I don't know what he...
Well, this, this was a water company project, too.
I don't think that's...
When they put the water line in.
They put the water line in, and there was a PennDOT resurfacing project.
It is.
Right? So, I don't know if the Water Authority had some working relationship with PennDOT to do these things at the same time or not.
It just seems to me that that was not a proper way to leave it, to leave it gravelled in like that. Because you, you take a look at the city of Menneson, it's a mess down through here.
And even if we agree with you, we have no standing. It's not a road.
And just so you know, Don, when this was brought up before, in the nightmare, I, and I think Councilman Feehan, we both, and I think Lois even got involved in this. I screamed at some PennDOT engineers and project managers down in Fayette and Washington.
Oh, and I called them up on the news?
Right. We did all that, and I got some phone calls back, and they kind of admitted that, you know, yeah, this has taken a lot longer than it should have. It should have been all done beginning of this year. And I'm not taking credit for this, but I think if we didn't scream, what you see out there now, it would even be worse.
Oh, I, I would agree. I think when certain individuals, and I'm going to give you, Dave, and Tony, and we'll give you credit for that.
All right.
I didn't get yelled at. That's a plus.
I, I still have a bone to pick with you.
Almost made your day.
Almost have a bone. But anyways, I can't, I just can't believe the PennDOT let them get away with this unless they'd like that. I mean, it's a, number one, it's a hazard. You go through there, and you, everything kicking up the gravel.
Well, just so you know, what was told to me by the PennDOT project engineer was, was delayed it, and we knew nothing about this, was they were actually renegotiating part of the contract to have the work done. And my question to them was, I thought this was done two years ago. Why are you renegotiating something? Well, there were delays with the contractor.
Told us.
Well, they were down Wanesworth, finishing the airport.
Possibly.
No, that's where they were.
Well, wherever they were, PennDOT should have been on their butt.
Yeah, well, for whatever reason, PennDOT didn't really worry about Menneson. And actually, no one seemed to until it made the news. I just, I just don't understand how they got away with it. It's not, it's not safe.
I'll keep calling them out if I have to.
Well, good luck with that.
It worked the first time.
Well, it did, but still, nothing seems to have gone by it, you know, since they haven't touched it. Um, what's the deal on Third Street there? How long is that going to be shut down? Last time I heard, it was a timeline on getting that building down. What is that?
Two seventy-nine scooter makers? The two seventy-nine scooter makers? Uh, I'd have to look at the contract. But I talked to Tony Evans about, he, downtown wanted to know if we can open that part of Third Street just for emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're discussing that after.
Because we get a, we get a, we get a fire up in high-rise there.
Yes.
They're going to be responsible for considerable delay.
Yeah, Tony called me the other day, and we were going to talk after this meeting.
Yeah, it's just like, they, they seem to have come in, and they tore off some of the facade, and then they just stopped. I was just wondering what the holdup was.
Are they still doing it by hand?
I believe so, but I think the contract either calls for ninety or a hundred and twenty days, somewhere to have completion.
Well, there's got to be some normal consideration, too.
Sure.
There is a timeframe that they require, unless there's...
Okay, I'm just curious what it was.
Yeah, we are looking at just opening up for emergency vehicles. Because they can't swing the truck on the other road.
I have a ton of other questions, but I got lots of time in the future, so you all have a good night.
You have my number. You know, you can call me back.
Oh, I will be.
Thank you. Uh, for any questions, there will be an executive session afterwards. And motion to adjourn?
Motion.